I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great blood which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous tides o'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, came through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
So we're gonna do one more song for you. This is entitled "River of Greens" by Billy Joel, and it was arranged by Mr. Ethan Reaver.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Thank you. I want one of those condos.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Clause of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Prep Issue of June 16, 2016, and January 24, 2017. All municipal clerks of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met. I need a motion for approval of the minutes. Questions?
Mr. Essentola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauwer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lattin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Communications are maintaining the office on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Now it's time for Mr. Sampson to present his report.
Okay, so I'm just gonna start down here, and hopefully we will have a couple presentations, but this is more of an intimate gathering than we're used to. I don't need the microphone. A couple years back, we partnered with several schools, Freehold Borough Public Schools. We put into public schools, and we hosted a visit from New Taipei City. And New Taipei City is a district of literally several hundred thousand students, and we had an awesome couple days here where they came out and went around the district. I think they were in this building. I think they were at Freehold Township High School, and it was a wonderful visit. And Rocky D'Amazic, who is the superintendent of the Freehold Borough Public Schools, has maintained a close partnership. We've got some work to do in that realm. But was back over there recently, and they sent him coming to greet us, so I want to just give the floor to Dr. D'Amazic for a few moments.
So the two weeks ago, I was in New Taipei City, and they have a new commissioner. Their student population is 382,000 students, 330 schools, so big operation. And when we went over there, I visited each of our sister schools, and they told me that there was a new commissioner. So I went off to headquarters, and unfortunately, like most Americans, I had very little to give, and I got a gift. And so I met the commissioner, and I was ready to sit down, and they said, "Oh, but wait a minute. There's also that Freehold Regional High School District. We want you to bring this to Mr. Sampson as a gift." So I had to find room in the suitcase. It was sitting along, a very, very nice little statue. It has the symbols of New Taipei City where these are, and so I'm going to complete my mission tonight and give to Chuck Sampson their New Taipei Commissioner of Education's brand-new gift. So with that, I know... And I'll just say that we did arrange when we were over there that about 40 of the students would come right around Halloween of November 1st at the middle school level, and we're gonna share it out between Hope Tech and Hall North and Freehold Borough, which was about 15. They don't stay. They'll take their arrangements. They'll just spend two days at school, and I don't know what they'll think when they see the little kids in their Halloween costume. It'll be a nice few days. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So the next... There's a few other components to my report, and they involve presentations. So the board wants to come down. We'll block the screen. So while we're setting up, a couple of notes. We do the biannual Violence and Vandalism presentation, and that is required by code where twice a year, school districts have to report out on a whole host of, you know, sort of negative infractions that have occurred under the category Violence and Vandalism. We've flipped that script here over the past several years, and one of the things that we like to do is we certainly do the reporting component that's required, but we also like to really focus on the preventative measures and the positive programs that we have in our school system that help mitigate those poor decisions that students may make, especially with 11,000-plus teenagers. It's our job to help them make better decisions and understanding that at times they're gonna make poor decisions as part of growing up. And so I'll turn over the portion of this program to Ms. Powell, who's in charge of this presentation.
Thank you. Yes, it is time for our biannual Report of Violence, Vandalism, Substance Abuse. And excuse my back to everybody over here, but we'll focus on the numbers. And this is for Phase 1 of our school year, which is from September to December. What you'll notice right away is, of course, the numbers really do tell a positive story. But I think what we always remember, and we take a lot of time to reflect on internally, is that these numbers represent students. And as Mr. Sampson said, our goal in always working with students is that we are helping them to learn more than just academics, but to learn a lot about the choices that they make. As you can see, our unduplicated total for this phase is 48, and we really credit that to all of our work with the families and the partnerships that we've developed with our staff, all of the community resources, and particularly our families. So we'll break that down a little bit, and as you can see, the next table shows each category more specifically. Violence included six incidents of simple assault, one sex offense, two incidents of threats, and four fights. There was also one incident of vandalism, which occurred on a school bus, and there was damage to a seatbelt. If we look at weapons, there were four pocket knives and one airsoft BB gun, and in all instances, students had them simply on their possession. They weren't used in the context of any type of a fight or an assault. Under the category of substance abuse, the number of students found in the under the influence was 14, and the number of students engaged in possession was seven. As you can see, the predominant substance continues to be marijuana, which is really consistent with state and national data. And our district has, and will always have, a very aggressive approach when it comes to working with our students. We have a real sense of urgency in ensuring that we're educating students, that we're making sure that both students and parents are aware. And I would say that the individuals that probably work most closely with many of our students in this capacity are our Student Assistance Coordinators, our SACs, as we call them, one of which we'll be recognizing this evening. Their primary goal is working with students on all types of mental, social, emotional issues, but certainly substance abuse, always with ensuring that we're working through those areas so that they can be academically successful. They also have lots of connections to all of the community resources and help our students in finding those resources so that they can be successful. Our next category is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And as you can see, for confirmed HIBs for this phase, there were 14, and for unconfirmed HIBs, and that's really as per the ABR definition, the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act, there were eight incidents. Again, like substance abuse and like many of the other things we talked about, our approach is always to make sure that we're educating students, educating parents, and being proactive. In fact, at the beginning of every single year, it's one of the most important components of our ninth-grade orientation, to ensure that students understand what the definition is and what bullying is as it's defined, and then working with those students on that definition and on all the ways to ensure that we have a positive and supportive school climate. So as Mr. Sampson said, we really look at prevention and intervention, and that's so much a part of our goal. And one of the individuals that is integral to this is both actually a SAC, our Student Assistance Coordinator and an anti-bullying specialist. And tonight, we are so excited to honor Mrs. Camille Musari. Mrs. Musari has been... Mrs. Musari has been a Student Assistance Coordinator at Howell High School for over 20 years, and most recently was honored with the Jim Mulvaney Award. I think what makes this award so special is that her colleagues nominated her for this award, and this is just some of what both the students that she works with and her colleagues share. She has a perseverance and passion for the work that she does and an unfailing commitment to the young people she serves. In fact, often she is the first person a student will seek out in a difficult time or crisis, and several students over the years have credited her with actually saving their lives. Miss Musari, congratulations.
Yes, absolutely.
I had the honor of working with Camille for 10 years at Howell High School, and the students, the faculty, so blessed to have her, so lucky to have her. She has an incredible wisdom. Not only does she counsel the kids, she counsels the faculty and the administration through a lot of difficult times. My first month at Howell High School, we had a tragedy, and that was the first time I saw Camille go into action. And I was like, "Does anybody do anything for her?" Because she's emotional, and when you should see her walk out of the building at 2:30, 3:30, 4:30, like, "I hope somebody's gonna go home and take care of her," you know, like a hug. So they're very happy to have her, and she's got a great supportive family, and I miss you. You do a great job. Congratulations.
Camille, congratulations again. We have the good fortune to attend the banquet where they honored her, and it's always awesome to see someone honored by their peers and the things that folks said about you were tremendous, and it's been a long time of work that gets boiled down to a little award, but it's well earned. So congratulations.
I appreciate you more than anything.
You know, she's amazing in school, but she has the compassion, you know. You don't... That's just in you. You know, everyone doesn't have that compassion, and it's so important for the students, and I really appreciate that.
And I was like, "Interview me, Camille."
Good hire!
She walked out of the tour after the interview. I looked afar from the apartment and said, "Don't even bring anyone else in."
Thank you. I... Well, I... I'm doing... I'm grateful, I do so. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
You're invoking confessionals here. And so I'm switching gears a little bit here. I wanted to update the board and the public about the status of the planning for our most recent strategic plan or subsequent strategic plan. As you know, we are currently in Year 5 of the Five-Year Plan titled Compass, which was really groundbreaking for a lot of the things that we did in that plan, really the formation over 2011, 2012, and coming to fruition with adoption in 2012. But I think the beauty of that plan really lays in the planning that was embedded within that plan for the next plan. And I've said it multiple times, we were incredibly strategic about the benchmarks that we built in there in order to ensure a continuity of planning in the school system for the long run. And so we baked in-state mandates and things of that nature as just part and parcel of what we were to do, and then really set a course to dramatically alter the academic achievement in the district for the good. And there's been a lot of wonderful accomplishments over the past five years with that. Some of our numbers from an academic standpoint are really through the roof. We've increased our AP numbers by over 2,500 tests from 2011 to 2017 with a population of 800 fewer students. We're moving 558 kids along the continuum this year into more challenging coursework. We built some new programs, tweaked some existing programs, opened an awful lot of access and opportunity for a wide range of students across the district, and really focused on modernizing the instruction across our district. And we're looking into a block schedule in about a year and a half, a year and three-quarters really, by the time we really get going. And we think we've set the stage well. And so part of the process that we've done is very deliberately baked in a continuation of the planning. So in Year 4 of the Five-Year Plan, we called for a systems accreditation across the district. Traditionally, our six high schools have been accredited by the Middle States Association, and they were on a completely different cycle, and they follow different goals, and they chase sort of different things, and it was all well-intentioned work, but it was very disjointed and fragmented work. And so what we wanted to do in Year 4 of the plan was bring together a system-wide view of the Freehold Regional High School District in order to collect data and to really engage in stakeholder input to lay the foundation for the planning of the subsequent plan. We also knew that we really wanted student voice to be at the heart of the next plan, so we learned a few lessons from the previous plan. As good as Compass was, as we moved forward, we felt that we could be a little bit more flexible with how we pivoted when things changed, because the pace of change has been so rapid in not just public schools, but certainly out in the workforce in the past five years. Spent an awful lot of time in some of the corporate workspaces over the past six months. It's a very different place than what school looks like. You know, there's an awful lot of teams coming together, individual work, teams coming together, sort of... Everybody has to find ways to work at their own pace, to manage their own work, create their own work, and then work with teams, and then come back and work individually. It's a different dynamic than anything that we've experienced, and we expect that pace of change to continue to evolve. And so we wanted to build the next plan in a more nimble manner, predicated on student voice, involving stakeholders on an annual basis in a much more engaged way than what we might have done with the existing plan. And so picture Year 4, the Middle States Self-Assessment. That grabbed an awful lot of constituent feedback for us as we began to lay out this year, what does this planning process look like? And then I've got the different tenets here of what we look like in terms of who we were reaching out to over the past year. So alumni, community, the executive student cabinet, staff, steering committee, the Board of Ed ultimately, but students at the heart of it, right? Students at the heart of it. So some of the things that we did, from the Middle States Systems Accreditation. These are the numbers of who responded to a very extensive survey that was put out, and most of the board members, most of the admins that are here will remember the survey. But the systems team, which was comprised of 70 different folks, we had building-based teams, and we had a district team overseeing that, and there were goals that were developed in each of the building. So we had over 1,000 parents complete that survey, almost 3,000 students, and just shy of 900 faculty and staff members. So we began to really sort of take that data and start to look at what was emerging as some of the areas that we really needed to focus on for the next plan. Second part we did is that we put together a very comprehensive survey for recent graduates. And so we reached out. One of the things that we tried to do as much as possible is collect email addresses to our exiting seniors' personal email addresses so that we can continue to connect with them after they leave our hallways. And we reached out to our graduates from 2012 to 2015. So these are students that have been in our hallways over the scope of the lifespan of Compass, which we thought was an excellent sort of tie-in to what we're looking for. And we asked them a fairly simple survey with a lot of open-ended answers, though, which were just sort of let it up to them in terms of what feedback they were going to provide us. And it's funny, I was teaching a graduate class last week, and I was talking about this process, and I asked a graduate class of educators. I said, "So we put this survey out, and we reach out to all of our recent graduates, and how many folks did they fill that survey out?" And so the guesses were five, nine, and somebody was bold enough to say 47, right, for some reason. We got 1,400 responses from our recent graduates, which told me a few things. One, it told me how incredibly vested those young folks were in our school systems. Two, it told me that they wanted to help us make our system better for the kids who were coming behind them. And three, they had things to say. And so a lot of the open-ended feedback that we got validated, a lot of the work it did, it pointed directionals to work that we know is yet unfinished, and it provided us a real exceptional base of just feedback to really sort of dive into. So we did that. We then brought the... So we had an original steering committee when we put together Compass, and we had met in the fall of 2012. So every single one of those folks that were still available, we brought back for a day in February, and I facilitated the day myself. And we went through a number of activities about, hey, where did we go right with what you originally envisioned in this room in 2012? Where have we fallen short? Where we need to continue to work towards? And then what are the new directions that we didn't necessarily anticipate then that we need to move forward now? So we brought those folks back together. This is a sample of just some of the work samples that they produced. And again, by the end of the day, the entire room was covered with sticky, giant sticky papers with feedback to questions, and really got unearthed a lot of tremendous feedback there. These smiling, happy faces are this year's Executive Student Cabinet, wonderful students. We said that we wanted student voice to be at the heart of what we did. What we worked with, and those of you that are here, you know that each year, the Executive Student Cabinet usually engages in one or two large-scale projects across the district. And one of the projects that they're really engaged in this year that we're particularly proud of is that in each of their buildings, they ran student-focus groups to collect very specific feedback for us. So these students were completely randomly selected, a cross-section from grades nine through 12, because again, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't, "Oh, when you grab this group of students, you're just gonna grab the kids who are enjoying their school experience and love everything about school." No, it was completely random. We went through by lunch periods. We grabbed five freshmen, five sophomores, however it was. We pulled them together in a room, and then we developed a series of questions with the Executive Student Cabinet over a couple meetings, and then they facilitated the feedback sessions. And they actually modeled some of their own answers, because we had walked them through... And they actually modeled some of their own answers because we had walked them through this, this focus group in the executive cabinet, Dr. Hazel, Dr. Moore, myself, this is Hal. And then they, they, they ran with the students. And so, we collected all of that data, and they're, they're still working on some other things for us as well. And here's, here's where we're heading. So, so we've boiled it down to four critical components. Whole child, equity and opportunity, student growth and learning, and community. And under those four threads, what's going to happen as we move forward in the planning for the next plan is we are going to develop stakeholder committees for each of those threads that involve community members, faculty and staff, students, board members, administrators, there'll be folks attached as the key liaisons to that. And these teams are going to meet twice a year. They're going to meet in September to go through the initial goal-setting of that thread because there's going to be a whole action planning around each of these four. So think Compass where we have our sort of long-term goals and our result statements of what we're going to do year over year. We're going to build those action plans out. But again, one of the, one of the shortcomings that we want to avoid in some of this strategic planning is things become a checklist. You know, it's like, oh, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this. So we're going to form these teams that will meet in September to help establish the, the goals and refine those goals through the year. And then in May of each year, we're going to revisit that progress and where we are and make an assessment on whether we need to pivot or not. If there are things that we didn't foresee, things that might be better done, things that might be more effectively followed in, in a different way. So the, the goal is ultimately a truly nimble plan. A plan that is responsive to the community, a plan that takes in a much wider array of stakeholder feedback in real time, and then pivots the school district for success in, 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 in where it needs to go. A lot of this is, will, will, will play out particularly over the summer as the administrative team dives into these four tenets and starts to lay out some of the, the clear directionals we have from all of the feedback we've, we've collected. Board members will be asked to serve on one of these teams, and then we'll be soliciting input for larger, larger community groups to come together twice a year to help us, A, establish the directional, and then B, monitor those action plans for implementation. And we'll put together a larger five-year thread in that that will be unveiled to the board in September, but this is the status of where we are now. Any questions?
Is there anything from the alumni survey that shocked you, surprised you?
Yeah, the, the surprise was how much, honestly, so this is going to sound like I'm tuning our own horn here, the surprise was, so we increased, we, we eliminated a lot of those barriers to honors and advanced placement classes. The unsolicited, open feedback from kids was compelling about how some of those opportunities changed their lives. And the other issue was many of them regretted not taking more challenging courses in high school that they thought they were capable of doing, but you saw real change, right? So 2012 to 2015, there was a dramatic elimination of what I refer to as artificial barriers for kids to take certain courses. And you could see the difference by year of graduation in terms of how confined they felt or didn't. And, and, and the overwhelming request that, and belief that, A, I shouldn't be taking these more challenging courses because it would have set me up later in life better was, was really compelling. It, it, it was the, it was the best validation that I've gotten of the work we've done here because it came from the students. Any other confessionals or? So that's the status. We'll work through, through the summer on this, the board will be regularly updated on that. We'll, and, and we'll, we'll have a, a, a much more elaborate framework put together, and then we'll be putting the teams together by the end of this school year for the start of next year. Couple of things while, yeah, I need to get this off. Couple of things while I'm still up here before we go because I'm just holding the microphone. Our executive student cabinet met again on last Tuesday. They are putting together, one of the cooler things that I think we've had them do over the years, they're putting together the new staff orientation. So remember, in June of each year, every, every new staff member that we've hired, we bring them together at the board office, and Mr. Sharp oversees all the, Dr. Sharp, excuse me, oversees all of that. And, and, and we bring those folks together, it's a terrific afternoon, it's something that, you know, not a lot of places do where it allows me an opportunity to just talk to them about the things they should be thinking about over the summer if they really want to be a faculty and staff member here at the Freehold Regional High School District. But then, the student, the executive cabinet always talks to them about what they expect of a teacher and a staff member here in the district. And that's much more powerful than anything that I can do. So they're putting that together now, and we're looking forward to that day in June. concludes my report.
Public participation. I have Matthew.
I'm here today to state a concern about a good friend of mine. I was informed by classmates that he is no longer in this school, and he's having some troubles with the district. I'm speaking about Dr. Brett Holman. So I stand here to hope to get some answers on his whereabouts and to tell about my experience with Freehold Borough High School as I was a student here for three years, and talk about my experiences with Dr. Holman himself. So good evening, folks. My name is Matthew Ostraduski, as some of you know. I didn't run this school for three years. I am the kid whom you guys wanted to give up on. I am the kid who was a big problem for you and your school district. I am the kid who contemplated suicide because of depression and anxiety. You didn't want to help me, in fact, excuse me, in fact, you couldn't have cared any less. There's one thing that this high school, that we joined again today, provided me with, that is the loving care that Dr. Brett Holman showed for me. If my problems occurred before the first bell, he was the one that was there. If they had occurred after the last bell, he is the one that was there. When I was at home instead of at school having an anxiety attack, he is the one who makes those phone calls, not you. All I got from you was, if you aren't here tomorrow, then you can't graduate. You don't understand the love and compassion that I felt from that man throughout my high school career. My problems were not resolved by you, but they were resolved by the hard work and true passion that Dr. Holman showed for not only me, but any students that have walked through these doors. He is the only reason I have that high school diploma. He is the reason that I stand here more happy, optimistic about life than ever before. My opportunities are endless because of the support that he provided for me. He was more than a counselor or whatever label you want to put on him, because to me, he was my friend. Friends stick together, that's why I am here to speak and tell you that I'm scared for the next suicidal, suicidal, anxiety-filled student that walks through those doors. God knows it, and I know it, that if you are listening to me today, you don't have the compassion, knowledge, or capability to be the friend that they might be seeking. To end this, I'm going to say I'm glad my high school diploma doesn't stay for a while because I would be ashamed to represent you guys in my future. I would also like to add that my experience may not involve you personally, but is pointfully directed at the school and the staff, which automatically involves you in it. Thank you.
Matthew, thank you for coming out. You know, I, I don't, I don't know your personal story. What, what I will say about some of your comments is that we take the, the health and well-being of our students in this district incredibly seriously, so I would, I would posit that publicly. And short of that, I would, I would, I have no comment to make about anyone that he might have spoken about. Mr. Tuskamal?
No, I would add simply, Matthew, that to answer your question, the district does not know the private whereabouts of Dr. Holman. You know how to reach him, that's entirely between you and him. Dr. Holman is only employed by the board, so I can answer that question infinitely.
And I appreciate that, and the fact that when you even say his name, I can see it in your eyes, and I can see how you say that it doesn't even seem like you know him. It seems like the fact that he has loving care for his students, which if you ever walk into that office, you would realize that. And that is an issue to me that the man who not only saved my life but gave me the opportunities that I have today is no longer here. And I understand that not many of you are going to comment about that. And to the first gentleman who spoke, you said, you know, those issues are big issues, but on the presentation that I just watched, I believe it said there was 22 counts of bullying. I can walk through these halls and show you 22 counts of bullying in one day of being at this school. You think when somebody walks into the lunchroom and sits with one person, that that's not bullying by the rest of the people? Then there is something wrong, and you're completely naive to believe that in a whole year, there was only 22 counts. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Regarding the agenda, two amendments to be dealt with. The first is on G4. There is listed an appointment of Brigid O'Neill. We're going to remove that from consideration on the agenda, so strike the Brigid O'Neill appointment, the rest of G4 stands as, as written. And then on approval of overnight excursions, I'd like to add one to that. The school is Cold Snack High School. The group, the Navy Junior ROTC. Event destination is the 2017 New York City Fleet Week Tiger Cruise. Dates, May 21 through May 24, 2017. Four students, two chaperones, so if you would add it to the list.
Yeah, there's also one other addition to the G section, it's going to be G22. Be resolved that a plot recommendation superintendent schools, the termination of employee number 5486 be approved effective May 29, 2017.
Okay, I need a motion to take the agenda of G1 to K3. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, I have to abstain. I have to abstain, Mr. Sampson's trip to a conference.
Thank you. Ms. Nankeller?
Yes.
Mrs. Lather?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Ms. Sitter?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Muggers?
Yes.
Okay, full business? New business? I'd like to say some.
Oh, after you, I'll go. Because I have something to say, too. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, go ahead, I'll go ahead.
Okay. We're delighted to announce Mr. Sampson has been named Month County Superintendent of the Year. From Mr. Sampson's fellow superintendent colleagues from the county, and then now down to pool finalists, who are asked to submit an application highlighting district work. It's just amazing that all the colleagues in the state, I'm so proud that they picked out superintendent. They highlighted his work and accomplishments in the areas of leadership for learning, communication, professionalism, and resource management. Mr. Sampson will now be considered for the New Jersey Superintendent of the Year. It is an honor to have our superintendent recognized for his accomplishments here at the Freehold Regional High School District. We wish him good luck in the next steps of the process and have our fingers crossed that he will be recognized at the state level.
My mom voted for me three times.
Go ahead, Mike.
Oh, thanks. Well, I know next month, we're going to have our spring sports awards, so I want to focus on a team that I, hopefully they will get acknowledged, but I'm not so sure because it depends what happens in the state playoffs. But at all these award ceremonies, we deal with a lot of programs and players that have deep tradition, and we see a lot of great student athletes. But there are some people that I think should be acknowledged who may not be. And I just want to point out that at Marlborough High School, the girls' lacrosse team, I want to call out coaches Daly and Nessie because in Marlborough, there's no feeder program whatsoever to girls' lacrosse. They don't play it in junior high school. So these coaches take on all these players who never pick up a lacrosse stick before they get to high school. And because of that, these coaches inherited a program that wasn't so great through no fault of their own. And I just think it's so amazing that at this point, they've built this program to the point where they've won two state playoff games. And if I go back to the time when I first started on the board five or six years ago, I never in my wildest dreams could have imagined that this program could be at the point where they won two state playoff games. So I just wanted to point out that coaches Daly and Nessie have really done a phenomenal job, and hopefully we will see them at spring awards. But if we don't, I want everyone to know it's not so easy to build a program when the town has nothing and the junior high school is not providing anything, so. Ms. Andriachi, please, please let them know that the board does realize the great work they've done this season.
I need a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second. One favor?